Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check in for Monday, November 4th, 2024. It's 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Manser, Chair of the Board. On my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Emily Claus, and Commissioner Carolyn Mejia, anticipating virtually. We anticipate Commissioner Fornier in a few moments. Public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Robyn Campbell, and Josh Cummings here. Summer Miller from our budget team. We have a couple of standing items and one specific item to review. First up is Commissioner Reports on External Boards and Commissions. Commissioner Edwards, did you have anything to report?
I don't have anything on merit to report that we need to get around today.
Commissioner Mejia?
Yes, I do. I'm almost in. Can you give me a second?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Claus?
I don't have anything today. Thank you.
Okay. I don't really either if it relates to external boards. I guess while I'm buying a little time for Commissioner Mejia, the Salmon Recovery Council had a... Well, we were all invited to a presentation by the Strategic Initiative Leads, which is a set of groups that do work on coordinating actions across different sectors. Our own Planning Commissioner Kirk Day is one of the leads on the... From ecology on the one of those, so he did a good job presenting. That was an interesting presentation that was recorded. And I did attend the weather briefing, most of it. We had a good job by staff across different sectors and had a meeting with County Manager and Sheriff over in the City of Olympia regarding a potential partnership at Thurston County Jail. So that's some project that we're still working on. And there was a tour given of our jail facility.
Sheriff, I could add, I agree. I thought our emergency services staff, Ben and Kyle, did a fantastic job with the weather briefing. It was my first one, so I appreciated how thorough they were in bringing all the other agencies forward. So, good job to staff.
At noon, there was a WASAC. Go ahead, Commissioner Mejia.
Oh, I was just gonna add on that note that I attended that briefing as well, and I appreciated the coordination that's happening through all the jurisdictions. And it was just, yeah, just great job to staff.
Absolutely. It was a good presentation. This afternoon, there was a WASAC Virtual Assembly of Commissioners regarding broadband BEAD funding, of which Washington State's getting 1.4 billion to try to plug gaps across different broadband, trying to get the whole state either fiber-connected or a combination hybrid of fiber and wireless. They showed the map of all the counties, and I was able to zoom in on Thurston County and...
Oh, cool.
Yeah, our biggest, I mean, our biggest gap is most, there's two areas.
Okay.
All around Yelm. And then it didn't look like so much Rochester, but like everything kind of southwest around the Independence Valley corner of Thurston County, that very southwest corner. It was a concentrated hotspot of non-connection. And then a broader area around, kind of looked to me, kind of just around Yelm and the outskirts. The rest of the county looked pretty good according to the map. But anyway, the funding window is open for that November 12th and runs through the end of January. And it's something I think for our team to look at and see where, how we're gonna fit in. There's matching, but there's ways, if local jurisdictions want to be leads, they can get matching provided by the state. They encourage obviously public-private partnerships of various kinds. And I know we've done stuff with the Nisqually Tribe, so I didn't know how all that fit. Might be a topic for a future discussion, update to the board.
Yeah, it's a great conversation that we'll circle up with Jenica and just make sure that we're tracking, and then we can point her in the right direction.
Rob was there at the very beginning of the meeting, but he had to click out. So I was, far as I could tell, I was the only Thurston County person on the meeting today. Commissioner Edwards?
Didn't we set some of that ARPA money aside to do some activities? I think, I wanna say shealess, but it might have been the Squali Tribe.
Yeah, we definitely did, but there's deadlines. Our big, we spent some of it, and then a big, another proposal didn't, we didn't get granted the thing. And so I'm guessing, I'm looking at Robyn, because you were helping us through that. But I'm guessing that, you know, the deadlines for...
Did we move that money into other appropriate uses?
We had to because of timelines.
Yeah.
But now there's new money. I mean, they had a chart of like all the funding streams. Broadband's a really big effort. There's a lot of federal. I mean, there's all kinds of funding streams. It's starting to look like the homeless funds, you know, chart where there's like, you know, 14 different streams coming in. But this BEAD, B-E-A-D, broadband equity, access, and deployment is kind of the big-ticket item right now. And the decisions are gonna be made in the spring, and the contracts are gonna be signed in the fall. Project area is identified of 1,000. You get points. And like there's project area, and there can only be one applicant per area. It's kind of a system they've set up. That's what we were trying to get an overview of. So it's something for Jenica to just make sure if she has any questions that I might know from what I learned today.
Yeah, we'll circle up with you.
Touch base.
Great. Thanks for flagging that.
Yeah. Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. I apologize. The big things that I wanted to report is, well, I did attend the fall/winter weather briefing. I also attended the viral respiratory illness update, which was very timely since I was sick. So I attended and saw, there is of course enough to go on that, so good job to Dr. Abramovic on that. I'm on attended TRPC, and that's what I want to report on. A couple of things is the member assessments for the technology fee assessment. That got approved, and so I'm not sure if any of you remember. I brought this forward a couple of months ago, saying that there was gonna be a new technology fee assessment coming from TRPC, kind of following the same model that Thurston County follows. And that's just for their software upgrades, and so they are charging all the jurisdictions for that. And so that got approved. And our...
Who can we charge for all of ours?
TRCP?
TRCP. And so for, let's see, Thurston County, the assessment is going to be 29,000. So our new 2025 charges plus the tech fee is 234,000, so.
234, you said?
Yeah, 234.
Thank you so much.
And our 2024 assessment was 201,930. Our draft assessment was 205,000, but because of the tech fee, it went up to 234.
For bringing that information back.
Yep. And then let's see. The other, there was a lot actually at this meeting. We also talked about the Growth Management Act housing need allocations. And so they did a presentation on that. And so we'll probably be getting, I'm looking at Josh, because we'll probably be getting kind of a presentation on kind of what was that, what was approved? I know, Josh, I'm not sure if you wanna kind of, you laid it out very nicely. I feel like I kind of lose things sometimes.
Was there anything new that occurred?
Nope. And so, nothing...
It was part of that process that we were kicking around.
Yeah, and we heard a lot of public comment about like, stick with the sustainable Thurston numbers. And jurisdictions were concerned about going with those numbers. But Department of Commerce was concerned with the initial numbers we had submitted because they were too big for urban growth area in Thurston County. And they didn't comply with GMA. And so they basically, our staff went back with other jurisdiction staff to the drawing board to kind of comply with those requirements and...
Yeah, no, that's right. And so I think we, unless we've heard differently, we have a solution that all the parties are in agreement with.
Correct.
Including Commerce and the other cities.
Yes. And so that's going to be brought forward to the board.
So we don't have to go into details now? Because it'll be a briefing? I believe so, yeah.
So...
We can do that. Mostly it was, are all the parties engaged? And we are.
A briefing that we initiate, or they're gonna come to us? Or should we reach out to them and ask them to come?
It could be a follow-on to the briefings that we've had previously. Because so what the board has heard is exactly what Commissioner Mejia said. There was some confusion on which number to use. Commerce, we provided those numbers back to Commerce. And I think it was Commissioner Edwards who said, "How are we being able to provide this housing allocation when that runs exactly opposite of Growth Management Act?" And Commerce saw the same thing. Both of these requests are coming from Commerce. And Commerce realigned, and we got back together with the cities. And the outcome is that everybody agrees on the percentage calculations. So we can do like a roundup of the success that was achieved in collaboration with Commerce and the cities. I'm not sure if it warrants an entire briefing, but...
Out of tune agenda though.
Okay. Well, just to know kind of where it landed. And I haven't seen the... 11%, 5%, 7%? I haven't seen the presentation.
It wasn't, well, it wasn't laid out kind of like that either. It was previously laid out in that manner, where it was like, okay, this is how much. But it really wasn't laid out in that way. So it's kind of difficult for me to say this is the percentage that was allocated to us, because it, you know...
I think Ashley or I would say that it meets the targets. But I think to the County Manager's point, we can come back and have that conversation again. Happy to do that.
Yeah, they did it more on like the housing units needed is how they did it this time around.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Mejia?
So, yeah, I just wanted to bring that, just because I think having, the full board having that information is important, because it was an issue that we did receive public comment on. Other than that, we just had the Regional Transportation Improvement Program contingency list and the congestion management process. Nothing really to report on those two items.
Okay. And let us move on to the first Commissioner item, but bulleted here is bond sale. I can see there's some slides that we've had.
Yeah, we have a presentation that will queue up. All right, I'm gonna pass over to Robyn, to update the board.
Okay. So, good afternoon, Commissioners. Robyn Campbell, Assistant County Manager. We're here this afternoon to let you know the steps we've taken so far to issue bonds and the upcoming issue, and to answer any questions that you may have about that. So for an overview, as you know, we intend to issue bonds to cover the following items. The purchase of a building for the sheriff in the amount of 20 million. We would both purchase the property and remodel the current building. $10 million for the remodel of the Mottman Center for the Ballot Processing Center for Elections. And an additional $2 million for security updates at the FJC in the Juvenile Detention Center. Next slide, please. The plan we have to pay for these bonds, the majority of the bonds will be paid from the Public Safety Sales Tax. For the sheriff's building, it will come from the law fund. We are estimating that for a 20-year bond, the average annual payment, because payments for bonds fluctuate, but the average annual payment will be approximately $1.6 million if we have an interest rate at 5%. And we won't know exactly what the interest rate is until after the bonds are issued, but this is in the range. The ballot processing center issue will be for a 10-years payment from Public Safety Sales Tax for Justice. And the estimated average annual payment is $1.3 million, again on a 5% interest, which is assumed. And the FJC security project, that's a $2 million project that we will pay over the course of 10 years. At this time, we're assuming that will be paid from the general fund. If there were capacity in detention sales tax, you could use that fund. But right now, there's not. So the average annual payment from the general fund is estimated at about 259,000 a year. The steps we've taken so far to issue these bonds, on February 20th of this year, the Board approved Resolution 16366. That was to preserve the county's ability to charge costs all the way back to December 23rd of last year. Any costs that we incurred on these projects, we can charge through the bond proceeds once the bonds are issued. On April 22nd, the Thurston County Finance Committee reviewed the proposal and recommended to the Board that you approve the issue of the bond. This bond conforms with the county's debt policy. On May 21st, the Board approved Resolution 16939, which authorized the Assistant County Manager to approve the final terms of a bond sale. The limitations are that it may not exceed 42 million. At that time, we set the amount a little higher than what we needed, just in case prices escalated. But at this time, we are only going to issue 32 million in bonds. And that resolution stated that the sale must be concluded no later than December 31st of this year. If you, we were not to proceed at this time, then you would need to issue a new resolution or somehow extend Resolution 16939 to move forward next year. County staff have worked very hard to prepare the preliminary official statement in coordination with our bond advisors and bond counsel. So staff from the Auditor's Office, the Treasurer's Office, and the Commissioner's Office have all worked together to ensure that that document, which is a legal requirement for issuing bonds, is ready to go. And on October 29th, we met with S&amp;P Bond Rating Analysts. And we should get our updated bond rating on November 8th. So the last steps are coming up very quickly. On November 8th, that's this coming Friday, the preliminary official statement will be posted. That document is reviewed by potential buyers of our bonds. On the morning of November 19th, we'll conduct the bond sale. And on November 5th, the proceeds will be in the county's bank account. So that is an overview of where we're at. And we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Edwards?
So after, after December 5th, we start paying interest. Is that basically what it amounts to?
The payments, the, according to the preliminary official statement, the payments would begin in June of next year. And the payments would be due on June and December of each year.
But in reality, don't, as soon as we take the money, don't we start paying interest at that point?
So the...
How does that work?
It's not like, it's not like a mortgage in that respect.
That's what I'm wondering.
It's not like there's a daily compounding interest. The rates and payment schedule are set in, in what the bond purchasers bid. We get bids to buy our bonds. And each bid is structured by what we would pay in interest and how much the principal payments would be. And those are not necessarily consistent over time. So it's, it is not like a annual compounding interest like you would see on your mortgage or a car loan. We would, the minute that we accept the sale, we know exactly how much interest and what the payments will be.
So when we take the money, there's an arbitrage issue there somewhere. We can't make any money on the money, right, somehow?
That's absolutely true. Yes, that's correct.
But, but you, you can deposit it wherever you deposit your money, and it can draw some interest, even though we're paying interest to the other outfit. I guess it just can't be more interest than...
That's correct.
And is that the way we do it? Until we spend the money, you know, we go out for a bid, get a contract, all that. So we're not paying, well, we might be paying interest because we took the money out. But it's not gonna be more than, it'll be more than what we're making, because we're not allowed to make any money on that, right? But we can break even or less.
True.
And that's, and that's the way that balances out. So while we're out for an RFP and we're...
I wouldn't say it balances out.
Well, I'm not gonna, that's probably the wrong term. There's probably some financial term for it.
Well, we, we can earn interest on the money as long as it's in the bank. But the point is not for government to put money in the bank. We're not supposed to issue debt to just put it in the bank. We're issuing debt specifically to pay for these projects. So these both, all three of these projects are scheduled to be completed by the end of next year. We will have spent all the money.
The money that, I don't know, we did a bond sometime back for...
The 2022 bonds.
For 50 million, or it wasn't quite 50, it was...
It was for the courthouse, right.
Whatever it was. Did that money earn us some interest while we had, while we were hanging on to it, while we hadn't spent it?
Yes.
Even though we were paying interest on it, it probably wasn't a, you know, so... We did hear something about 5,000 a day or something. We were paying interest or something.
We heard that.
But that wasn't necessarily what was happening. We were only paying 200 a day or something. I don't know.
I didn't look into it.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, we're gonna be, we have to pay interest. No matter, when you borrow money, you gotta pay interest. That's the way it works.
In the earliest, as in most government bond sales, the earliest we could refund these bonds, which is another word for refinance, is 10 years, at the 10-year mark. You can't...
So we can't pay it off early?
We can't do it, nope.
Can't win the lottery and pay it off?
Nope.
And do we get legal opinions on all this when we make these larger expenditures? I know we get it. I always hear, well, it's, yep, Legal says it's okay. Okay, is, it seems like when the county has made mistakes in the past, well, yeah, it was a mistake. But we don't ever seem to have anything to fall back on, that we have a legal opinion in writing. We've got a legal opinion verbally, maybe at a meeting, that says, well, yeah, we think this is okay. But we won't talk about that in a public meeting, is what we usually hear. So I'm just wondering, for future boards, do we ever get stuff in writing from our legal advisors that say, oh, yeah, you move ahead on this, it's fine. This is fine.
There have been times we've gotten information in writing from Legal. I will say...
Sometimes not.
That's right, as you know.
Okay. Can you talk, so the bond rating, is that like part of the process? And it can affect the terms we get?
Yeah, we have to, it is part of the process. Every time the county issue bonds, we go for a bond rating. They rate that particular issue. And the rating is an indication of the analyst's assessment of the county's ability to repay. So it's like a credit rating. And currently, our S&amp;P bond rating is a double A+.
So if we're, if we're, if our position's changed substantially and we're not in the position that we think we are, we'll have this independent check, sort of speak. I mean, we'll get that information, and our double A+ will go to something lower, and we can...
Potentially.
We'll be able to talk about that, if that's what happened.
Right.
Okay. I have a question. I know I asked this before, and I get confused. So I'm probably just rehashing something I already went through. But I'm still confused about the FJC project. I mean, I remember very clearly the Public Safety Sales Tax. And front and center there was, you know, a need for infrastructure for the sheriff's office and ballot processing center. I know that the way the bond issue, there was somehow this FJC project got into that bundle, and I don't really remember that. And I don't really remember, there's been four or five, honestly, FJC-related projects. My term in the board, I'm trying to remember exactly what this one's gonna accomplish versus all the other ones.
The one that's in the presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, what happened, remember, this was the security system upgrades that we were looking to find money for. We thought that we would have enough funding at the closeout of the last fiscal year with the reversion coming back. But in that conversation, it was suggested that staff look for alternatives, so...
Oh, this is the juvie jail?
Yes.
Okay, 100%. I just, okay, so... Now I remember. I was confused, because I don't...
Gotcha.
That's not FJC in my head. I know they're in the same space, but got it. I think that answers those questions. Commissioner Fornier?
No, I was just gonna see if I could provide just more explanation what that was. There were, and it sounds like you got it, so.
I was remembering the new courtroom in FJC and new camera system in FJ... There's been many FJC...
Yeah, this was like the, it's the main control system for all the doors, all the cameras. And we went and did those tours where now they're having to use manual keys. They can't do intercoms into the, into the rooms and talk to the residents that are there. And so it's a, it's a big safety issue. And we, we took, we tried taking three different stabs at funding it. One was going to the feds, that went nowhere. The other was using some of our rollover funds that now no longer exist. And then this third iteration is rolling it into a public safety bond measure.
Thank you. Perfect. Commissioner Mejia?
Sorry, my throat is tickling, so I'll pass up. I have a question in regards to, at one point... Sorry. At one point, we were discussing the $50 million bond and using that funding for, to pay for some of these projects, and what happened to that?
Yeah, so the, use some water?
I had a similar, I had the same question. Like my, just my simple, you know, reptile brain thought we were just gonna take out less money from the renovation bond. But so, but there's a different strategy being proffered?
Well, the, I'm sorry, I'm laughing when you said reptile brain. I've not heard that before. The, the difference on the bond that we have out and these bonds, I think what you should know is that the timeframes are different. And so we're borrowing money from different times. Um, the dollars that we have for the existing fifty million dollar bond left over, um, the concept there, and it's hard to really lay it all out because we, we don't know what options we're gonna get back once we go out and solicit for input from our development community on our space needs. But to use the rest of those proceeds to finish the revised remodel and then to have those dollars available um for whether we uh purchase land, purchase buildings, we just don't know what that's gonna look like. So if we were to use the existing bond for these projects or borrowing it for longer periods of time, then we would ultimately have to go back out for another bond to figure out what we're gonna do with the long-term courthouse plan. I think in both cases, um, together, these bonds take us up to our ability to pay out on bond payments. And so we might have a little bit more capacity, but not very much after that.
And the timeline that's associated with the earlier bond, do we have like a, a clock ticking there on when we would have to make decisions and use the money?
Yeah, we are two years into the three-year timeframe before we have to start managing the arbitrage payment. And so, um, we're very much aware of that.
What's the arbitrage payment that creates that, that, that issue?
Yeah, and it's just balancing that out to what Robbins uh was answering Commissioner Edwards on about, you can't make money off this, otherwise people would just borrow money, put it in the bank and collect the interest. So we're, we're managing that closely. Our approach on the courthouse is, which we're getting very close to, bring back to the board, uh, an overview on how all the space needs factored in so we can get um your direction on moving forward with the revised remodel. And at that point, then we would look to create a competitive process to get input from our developers within the um constraints of the city of Olympia so that we can come back and start looking at what are options about leasing, long-term lease to own, um, buying buildings or potentially um buying land to build something as we look to solve the long-term courthouse project.
Commissioner Fornier?
I, I'm, I just wanted to, I guess elaborate that, that I really, I think we're moving in a much better direction with these, this planning and the fact that we're looking at spending two and a half to five million instead of fifty million on the hilltop uh buildings is, is a much more prudent approach and, and is gonna result in much better long-term uh facilities planning, I feel.
Okay. Other questions on Commissioner Edwards?
So does the county have a long-term plan laid out? I mean, we talk about funding different things all the time from different places, but is there a commitment plan? Okay, that might be the plan that we're paying on this, we're paying on this, we're paying on this. And then the new plan would be uh the plan that we'd like to commit to. So that we can kind of balance out. I mean, I, I think of all the different things that we're paying on and sometimes we're getting those paid off, uh, sometimes not, like, I don't know, the jail construction bond might be coming up to be paid off at some point. And I think we're still paying on that building we sold sometime back over by the facility, I think.
Thirty-four hundred.
Thirty-four hundred building. I, you know, so, so do we have a plan that kind of lays out what's been committed and X is going out every year, every month, however you do it, every six months? So we have a total, we seem to never get that information or if we do get that information, it's not retrained in, uh, re, it's not retained in my reptile brain either.
So that was, uh.
I don't know, I'm just following my seatmates.
It's a debt payment schedule and you receive that. Um, you may recall earlier in the year when Duncan Brown and Stacy Yamazaki came and did a general presentation on bonds. And the payment schedule, how much the payments are, when they're gonna be paid off, where the payments are coming from, we're all part of that presentation.
I remember having those presentations, but never at times when they're talking about, well, here we go again, we're gonna spend some money on this.
And then there is a debt schedule that is part of the POS that we can provide to you.
To me, that would be beneficial to have that in front of you when I'm thinking about committing to new uh capital outlay for whatever reason. And I'm curious still on the FJC, that says it's coming out of the general fund.
That's right.
And so does that have anything to do with that, uh, the, the twenty-two bond that was?
Nope, not at all.
This just comes out of what we can afford.
That's correct.
Maybe we can and maybe we can't.
And if you could afford it out of detention sales tax, I would be recommending that you pay it from that fund.
But haven't we pretty much always?
For right now.
We're always having, we have that obligated to something pretty much all the time, don't we?
At this point in.
I can't remember what it happened.
There's room in that, oh, I can remember when there was capacity in that fund, but there's not right now. So with the sales taxes coming in at a much slower rate of growth and the costs of the operating, um, of both the adult jail and the juvenile jail that that fund supports, there's no capacity now. But if any of that should turn around, uh, I would recommend that you reassess, that the board reassesses where that payment comes from. But for right now, the commitment is to pay it and general fund is the place.
To answer your question, yeah, we can bring back an overview of all the obligations we have and how we're paying for them.
I, I, I guess I hate to always be bringing up stuff, but I don't have anything else to compare it to.
Sure, no, it'll give you context.
The thirty-four hundred building was a nightmare in my estimation. That goes all the way back to, I don't know, two thousand and four or something when, when uh it just got, it just got bought, like, well, maybe it'd be a good deal and we could use it. And we never did develop into something like that, but we pumped a lot of money into
There, there was a plan for what the county was going to do with that building and then that got changed, the plan changed.
I mean.
Much like the courthouse plan has changed.
Pardon?
Like building seven changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this one really changed. I mean, I can remember a commissioner coming to me in two thousand and four, I think, when I was sheriff and said, hey, do you think you could use that for a jail? I mean, not like, I couldn't hardly believe I was being asked that question, you know? I mean, it, it just showed that we, we bought it, but why did we buy it? Nobody ever explained to me why we bought it, but they're coming back, can you use it for this? And then we upgraded it for earthquake and put a roof on it and we stored stuff from the sheriff's office in it for a while and elections and all that. It was utilized, kind of a.
Can, can we put the presentation up?
Gosh.
The, the current bond, um, that is being sought for, that the board has had discussions for since earlier this year. Uh, go to page three. There we go, okay, there we go. So, so that this doesn't get um lost in the request, it's for the sheriff building, which we've had a lot of conversation about. Um, it's for the ballot processing center, which I believe the board has had a lot of um conversation about. And then it's for the security system at the juvenile detention. All of these, there's been lots of discussion, at least for the last seven months that I've been here. And I would say, if, if there's any questions about the viability, because I, I agree with what Commissioner Edwards is saying, that we don't just wanna buy something on a speculatory basis, but we believe that each of these facilities is actually, is actually going to um create opportunity for us to operate better as a county. And we know we're doing a due diligence on the sheriff building and we have the rights to step away if we find anything that is inappropriate or not to our benefit. From all um estimations right now, that that building is a good find and will greatly help the sheriff's operations.
The ballot processing center, didn't we pay six million for that or something like that?
So I would have to look back and see.
I mean, but I, I don't remember exactly.
Five, five points.
Yeah, something like that. And then we were gonna put a half million into upgrades or something, that was the initial thing and, you know, so am I gun shy about, I've lived through several of these situations and they make me gun shy, that's all. And then I'm not smart enough to keep up with everything that's being thrown out at different times, it's.
Well, yeah, I, I, I would understand. Um, you have the continuity, looking back and seeing different situations.
I do.
Way, way more than.
Than most, yeah.
Yeah, and, and definitely above, um, above what I have. I think each of these situations, if we didn't feel that it was a certainty, we would not be recommending that um to bond for these. I do believe that the board has had lots of discussions and each of these moves us in a much better situation than we have now.
Commissioner Fornier?
Um, are we, I'm, I'm trying to track because it seems like we're jumping around. Uh, are we talking about right now, are we on the subject of the sheriff's building and, and the, the, kind of the new facilities? Are we talking about, are we still talking about the hilltop buildings?
We're talking about the three, the, the three new projects that would be come from the new bond issue.
Okay.
Is to go forward and.
Not anything with the hilltop yet, right?
Okay, I'll keep, I'll keep my comments in.
Yeah, that just came up in context about the current bond we have and the new bond and the question.
And how it fits to the overall picture of county debt.
And there was at, at a certain point, a slide, so you're remembering correctly, that showed we, we could do this, we could do that. So good memories on all parts.
Thank you.
I just read an article, uh, I just read an article about King County considering, you know, like a billion dollars for, to try to um build housing and, and in, in the course of their article, it was talking about this, it's a subcommittee that's looking at it and it was like exact discussion that we have here that, you know, like local governments have incredible capacity to issue debt. Your only limit really is how much you can afford to pay.
Right.
And so they've calculated that they could go up to a billion.
Wow.
Under their, you know, financial means up there to, to work on housing issues. But it's a, yeah, I mean, it's, it's just figuring out, you know, like what you, how you can, what you can responsibly pay back based on projection, I mean, projections of revenue and.
Will they do like an adopted county approach?
Right, and, and the, um.
It said they could, they could, they could borrow six billion or six or seven billion, but only, they can only pay back one billion, so.
That's right, capacity to pay is the limiting, or, yeah, that's the limit here. Um, but commissioners will recall that proposition one specifically included language to be able to purchase uh infrastructure for the sheriff and to pay for the ballot processing center upgrades, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and that's.
Sir.
That's why I brought that up. I was actually gonna make that point, is like, that's why for us, we'd been looking at our ability to pay and these things weren't gonna happen without the public safety sales tax, which was a key component of our discussion. So with the, with the voters approving that, I think we have this, this is what, this is part of what we promised to do with that money.
Yeah. You know, part of part of that thirty-four hundred building and the whole, the jail that we built and we bought all that property where the family court is over there now, I mean, we bought quite a lot of property and a bunch of it is not being used right now. I can't recall how much. Are we allowed to sell that for possibly more than we paid for it because property's been going up? Is that legal for the county to do?
Yes.
So what's the plan there? Is there any plan over there? I see a lot of big warehouses going all the way around, but nothing ever happens constructive on our property that I can see that could be turned into some kind of a revenue stream or, I, I just don't know. I, you know, I know we've got property there yet, we've been sitting on it a long time. What's the deal? How can we make, can we make that work to our advantage at all? I mean, I guess I'm, I'm just gun shy because we built a jail, we let it sit empty for about five years. We bought a thirty-four hundred building for a certain amount, you know, a couple million, whatever it was, put a couple million in it and sold it for a couple million under what we had invested in. And then we got that property in Tumwater, so I, am I gun shy? Yes, I am. And I'm just trying to get it in my head, how we can make it all fit. And then when Ty talks about what King County is doing and trying to keep track of all that, it's just about impossible. You know, I, I know that's the way we have to, I guess, do business to keep functioning. But it, it'd sure be nice if we had a real simple plan laid out in, in front of us. We've got this commitment and now we're gonna commit to this and, and we still have X left over here if we really had to. You know, I, I think about like a family buying a car or something, they've got a house, house payment and a kid, send a kid to college and they wanna buy a car. I'm just trying to make it all fit.
Yeah, in addition to bringing, bringing back an overview on all our debt payments and the sources that we're using to pay for them, um, we can, in several weeks, take a look at different land that the county owns, just to talk through and get the board's perspective and direction on disposition strategies, you know, what, what do we wanna do with that?
I mean, eve- even the, uh, the estuary issue, I mean, it's, it's a new commitment that the county is apparently taking on. How is it gonna work? We really don't know what we can use and what we can really do with that yet. There's still question about that. So, and, and some of that list might be, well, this is questionable whether they're gonna be doing this or this. I don't know, I, at some point, I'd like to hear more about that, so I wouldn't be so gun shy.
Commissioner Fornier?
Commissioner Minter? Oh, I, I would say, I would say like, I, if you want simple, you're in the wrong room. You know, like nothing, we, nothing, but, but then at the same time, when I start thinking about it, there are, like, I do think about it in a simple way, it's like, you know, I think about, you know, the hilltop properties as an asset we wanna leverage into, you know, you know, you, you sell off one property to, you know, build into the next one. And so, I mean, I think in some ways it is very similar to like how you plan out your, you know, your, your home finances and stuff, but, and, but we have other properties that we don't know what we're gonna do with, like that, that one in Tumwater, I've never got an answer about what the, the vision is for it and we're just kinda holding on to it, not sure, but, you know, you gotta, you gotta figure out what, you know, a hundred years from now, would the county need it? Will it ever have the opportunity to buy something like that again? The Carpenter Road property, kind of the same thing. So, I mean, but it, it's, I would say that we, we can have those discussions, but you're not gonna be around to have them.
No, that, that's right.
So we could plan it out for twenty twenty-five, I might not be around to have them, some, you know, the, the board can talk them out in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I would just say that, I think that coming in over the last seven months, some of the things that many of the commissioners have been wrestling with for years is uh different space needs. Again, remember, I think the first week I was here, Commissioner Mish took me into her office, showed me on her whiteboard, it's a long-term plan for the courthouse. It's a new county manager, let's, I want you to start thinking about this. I, I think the positive thing is that the board and other electeds and ultimately the community approved the public safety sales tax. We see some progress being made and I think there's a, to your comment, Commissioner Minter, there's a really positive story about these two components, the, the sheriff building and the ballot processing center because it's um the board delivering on the commitment and the promise to the community. And so as we continue to look at those space needs, um, the subcommittee that the board created, created for the courthouse really made a lot of progress on bringing stakeholders together and uh getting the stakeholders to start moving in a direction of a common vision along with the entire board. So we're excited about the progress that's being made in some of these areas, but there's still a lot of work to do and we'll continue to take one step in front of the other. Hearing what you need at, to have at your fingertips to help make good decisions, making some notes about bringing some information back for some of you.
There was a, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to read the Deborah Mungia report that Rob forwarded.
When, 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 when did it get forwarded? When, when, when did it get forwarded?
Today. I was just catching up on stuff. But in, buried in there is a, is a, is a, on the lender of law and justice section is a, I forget the name of the organization, but it's a look at, you know, law and justice issues and fun, and staffing and funding and buried in there was a sentence from this independent organization that Washington's last in the nation and law enforcement personnel per capita.
Oh, for sure, I've known that for years, been that way for a long time.
Just kind of, just kind of showing why, you know, that it was a reasonable thing to ask the community and it was great that the community came forward and supported what we asked, so.
Oh, yeah.
In terms of building trust, I feel like that's a big step, right? Like it's supporting, we made representations about what the facts were and the community trusted that representation.
And now we got to follow through.
And felt it in their own lives, so.
And now we follow through with that.
Yeah, so that's all good. Okay, any other points on the bond plan? I'll be interested to see how the bond aid and these things come through. I'm sure we'll get an email about that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, and let's go to any other commission items that folks have to discuss today.
I do have one, sir.
I have one as well, go ahead, Commissioner.
So. Been on the board for four years now. And through many constituent concerns, I wanted to bring something, and I know that this is a topic that has a lot of history behind it and some of the history I do not know. And so it's something I would like to know. And I wanted to bring up the topic about having a unified compliance effort in our, in Thurston County. I know that compliance used to be one and then it got divided between departments. But one of the things I've noticed over the past four years is it's very difficult, especially as a constituent coming in and knowing that resources are very slim. And CPED, for example, when it comes to compliance, we haven't invested as much and so we have a couple of people just doing, carrying this big caseload, right? What other departments have a little bit more personnel to, to help with those. But, you know, as constituents are coming forward, one of the things is like, well, you know, for them, it's just one. And it's being like, oh, no, CPED has this part and Public Works has this part and environmental health has this part. And just the different messaging and people trying to jump through the different hoops and even as someone who's trying to jump through different hoops with their own compliance efforts, right, of like, well, CPED, right? Everyone, of course, just says, oh, it's community planning, but, you know, not realizing it's, it's three different places. And so. I, I just wanted to bring that conversation up. And again, I know that there is history, I don't know all of it. But I, I am entrusted in, especially with resources as tight as they are. And wanted to bring it up and have conversation about this and see if any other board member is at least interested in having this conversation about it.
I am, I, I want to, I, I love that conversation, I'm very interested in it, thank you for bringing it up.
And, and I am as well. And if you need any examples, I could give you a couple of examples that I think maybe staff should hear so that they can at least look into them and see what the issue is. And so. And when we talk about compliance, I, I've had people come to me often, I don't know how many times, but I've still got some of those cases pending. And they end up buying a property. And they find out that they go to, I don't know, add a bedroom or do something they want their mother-in-law to be able to fit or something. So they go ahead and for a, a permit. Oh, you've got this out of compliance and you've got this out of compliance. Or maybe they want to do a boundary line adjustment and get some more property. Anything they want to do, it seems like then the problem is exposed for the new buyer. And I, I'm working on one right now that the family has been paying taxes on a property for about fifty years and come to find out, well, that property wasn't a clear, wasn't a legal lot or something. But they've been paying taxes with the property number and all that, nobody knew. Obviously, somebody else bought sometime before. And then they died and it got passed on, nothing was done, nothing was done. Those are the kind of things I think that we are obligated, if we're going to talk about serving the public. When you talk about compliance, when somebody's running their septic tank into the local creek, that's a, like right now, let's get that fixed. But some of these compliance issues get put on the books somehow and then nothing is ever followed up on it. And that might have to do with resources, I don't know. But I don't think the new property owner, in, in one case, the property was sold three times and nobody knew about the problem. And until they wanted to buy a piece of property and attach it to their property, which I thought everybody in the county wanted was to have less construction. They wanted to do a property, property line adjustment of just a couple acres and add it to five acres, what they had. And then all this problem came out and then big expense on the citizens' park, so. I would definitely like to get to the bottom of that and let fairness have some play in here. So somebody been paying for many, many years and then all of a sudden they're told, well, that's not a legal law.
I'm not saying that Commissioner Mihi's idea is not warranted, but what I did learn, I mean, when I think when we started, we had two people and I think we added a third position and I just heard that two of those positions are vacant. I don't know if that's up, up to the date minute information, but if there's only one person doing a job that really needs probably fifteen or twenty people doing, then there's going to be problems, whether it's divided into three departments or it's all in one. If we consolidate it and create and triple the staffing and we can't staff, I mean, if we can't even staff three positions, then we're not going to get any, any citizen satisfaction from what we're doing. So, I mean, there's multiple problems to be kind of managed here, it sounds like. Go ahead.
I, I think we have a opportunity. In conversations with Josh and with our interim director currently, Ashley, there's been some ideas that they have on different ways to approach things. My recommendation would be that we set aside a future planning session where we could bring some staff in and really get from the commissioners, what, what do you want the outcome to be? What kind of approach and service level do we want? Because from Commissioner Menzner's standpoint, then we can allow staff to go back and look at the pipeline, where it's at and how it's been built. And in some cases, what I'm learning, what staff are bringing me up to speed on, what future boards had put into place through codes and other things.
Passports?
Pass, I'm sorry, passports, not future words, passports. What they put into, my reptile brain was in function.
We're all saddled with that today.
I think it's the wind, windstorm has been. What passports put into place as far as codes and other things? And do we want to continue that direction or do we want to see a change? And then we can build something different and that could be a, a great outworking of the policy direction the board provides and we situate staff.
I don't, so Commissioner Edwards, his first board before I was here, built a new process. I think I actually got to vote on it because it was kind of done when I started, but it was really his board that built that process and I think it's a good process. It just needs to be staffed up, like, you know, having that kind of ramping up and that softer hand up front and working with people, it, it's good, but it needs to, people have to be able to follow through on it. It has to be staffed up so that it works, it only, it doesn't work if you then don't staff it.
That's right, yeah. And, and things like, I, I don't want the septic going into the river. That, that's not what I'm asking for. But.
Thank you.
If there's, but if there's a gravity system that's been there and it's been working for fifty years and, or whatever else is out of compliance, I don't want to damage the environment, but I want to work with people. I'd like to have the public look at us like we're trying to help them. When they walk out of that permit center, they're smiling instead of growling. And the growing.
Having people, if I, I can look people in the eye and say, stuff's happening. You know, it may not be exactly what you want to happen tomorrow, but if a process is being worked through and, and, and it's moving, I think we can look our other side of the constituents in the eye and say, this is fair. Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I just don't want to focus just on CPED because what I'm talking about is not just, it's not a CPED thing, it's like.
Easy to talk about.
It's, it's a, because it's, it's, it's an environmental health and Public Works and I'm trying to figure out, okay, like how do this, these silos become like, you know, especially as constituents are reaching out or we're reaching out or whoever's going through the compliance effort, that there's at least, there's, that there's not as many silos, right? And that, you know, well, this is a Public Works process, this is a CPED process, this is an environmental health process, this is the compliance for these. Like I, I'm trying to see how it can be, again, a little bit more unified and, and I appreciate bringing this up in a future planning session. I think that's, that's good and hearing from staff on, on different approaches, I'm, I'm open to that. I understand that, you know, I'm, there's been staffing issues, that's, that's not my, what I'm, I'm getting at. I, I want to get, you know, I'm getting at a higher level of like, is there a possibility to?
Yeah, operating as one organization rather than individual departments.
Exactly.
And then, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying.
Commissioner Fornier?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Mihi has said it, I'm, I'm hearing that like, there's this, this like vision that there's different disparate processes all over the place and then you're looking for like a unified approach to compliance. So we would have like a philosophical discussion about voluntary compliance, code enforcement, proactive versus reactive, is that, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
In a way, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, it sounds good, can, can agreemen on, on that.
It sounds like we got some thumbs up on that.
Yeah, for sure.
Mine is not quite so lofty, but I just wanted to bring forward, last spring we had, I think it was Commissioner Mihi had brought up, oh, we have Take Your Child to Work Day. And it was kind of like, oh, we don't have time to really do what we've done in the past, but let's just send an email out and encourage people, but let's actually get organized and do it better next year. So now would be the time to, it's in April, so it would be the time to figure out how we're going to do, what we're going to do, so we don't get, I don't, I just don't want to get caught flat-footed because I was a little uncomfortable as a chair, sending out an email that didn't seem, it just felt like, it was obvious that we hadn't really planned it through and I want to make sure we do a better job this year.
Yeah, and so how it worked in previous years, and I was a staff member and I was the staff member assigned to that committee. So there was, it's a countywide committee that basically gets together with representatives from each of the offices and departments and, and they come up kind of with this itinerary of different things going on in different places, so staff can, you know, bring their kids and, and kind of take them, you know, they would, you know, take them to Public Works to see all the trucks and Sheriff's brought up the, you know, their armored car and the kids got to see it, they came to the courts to see like a hearing. It was different little programmed events at each of the locations and and so that's kind of how it used to work. And then, of course, COVID happened and that kind of committee just fizzled away. But it's definitely a, a big lift up for, just for one office or department to carry, so that's why there was this whole committee who was, so.
Well, another.
I just want to say kids love wastewater treatment plants.
Another thing that went away during COVID when it got going, we had just implemented a pilot breastfeeding program for new mothers and Bring Your Kid to Work With You program. And really, I thought that went over pretty good, but COVID came along and it got lost in the mix. Went away, moved, building changed. So I, I think that could fit in somewhere there where, I don't know what we've done. We talk about childcare and making it a little easier for parents to work here, but we don't ever seem to do anything, we just talk about it, so. Maybe that could be in the mix.
Other commissioner items? Nope?
No.
Okay, back tomorrow at nine AM for a gen society, we're, in the January journey.